This is Jason Anderson, Chairman of the Killenly Town Council, and I am calling this special town council meeting to order. It is currently seven PM on Tuesday, February sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. For roll call purposes, all council members are in attendance. Ms. Wakefield is remote, and Ms. George is trying to get in remotely now as well. We'll now move on to the agenda. Item three A, interviews of board and commission applicants. Vance Carter is seeking reappointment to the Board of Rec. As a regular member, his term would run from January first, two thousand and twenty-four, to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six. Mr. Carter's attendance over the course of his appointment has been consistent with only one absence in two thousand and twenty-two. The Board of Rec currently has no vacancies. Mr. Carter.
If I may, the town council members, you probably have received two copies of the agenda in your pack, in your mailboxes. They are identical. The only difference is on the back supporting documents for the boards and commissions, we inadvertently had incorrect last name for Mr. Vance, for Mr. Carter, and so that was corrected. So the, only the back interview page was what was, there was a slight correction on, but both agendas are identical, in case anybody is concerned or confused around that.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Carter. Want to thank you for your time that you've served on the Board of Rec, and just tell us a little bit about your time on it and why you're seeking reappointment.
Well, I'm very proud to be part of this commission because we here offer services of recreation and theater.
This is Mike Khan.
I'll start over. I, I'm very proud to be part of this commission because we provide such varied programs for very young to the very old. I mean, we have things for seniors, we have youth program which has over three hundred children involved. I also volunteer every Saturday morning from eight to twelve to help coach six and seven-year-olds, and I really enjoy that.
Okay.
Hang on a second. Elizabeth, can you mute your mic, please?
And we're, and as a commission, we're really looking forward to our expansion when we go to the Westfield Avenue site. I, I, one thing that's really, I think, underlooked in, in the town of Potter Recreation is the theater group itself. It orders, it has so many benefits to so many people that, and they work so extremely hard, they have great, great volunteers there. But I, I attend all the meetings I can, I've only missed one, and I think I was out of, out of country at the time. But I, I've also been involved in recreation my whole life in the town of Killenly from when I was playing youth, wasn't called youth back then, but I'm just proud to be part of it, and I'm looking forward to serve the next two years as well.
Thank you. Any comments from council?
Well, I'm glad you're enjoying yourself. I, I mean, we hadn't discussed it, it took a while for you to come forward the last time, and I'm glad you did, and I'm glad you're back.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for your, for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Wakefield, would you like to add anything?
I, I've stood beside Vance at quite a few of those football games.
Yep.
He's, he's a total diehard Killenly resident and totally in support of our students. He's, he's been a great addition to the rec, rec department. As Mr. Gambatista would, he stood in, filled in for me last, at the last Board of Rec meeting, he was quite impressed at how much, how many activities we, we have going on, and we're a very lucky town to have such an active parks and rec department, and Mr. Carter is definitely a welcome addition to that group.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it?
Thank you for the donation of time. I've done years of coaching, it's very fulfilling. I can see why you get enjoyment out of it, and it sometimes goes over the look like many of the things in town when people donate their time, and it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Is that it?
Thank you. We will be voting on your reappointment on next Tuesday.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item up is item three B. Mary Ann Schramm, and I apologize if I mispronounce your last name.
No, you did a good job.
Is seeking appointment to the Ag Commission. There are currently one regular vacancy and three alternate member vacancies. The regular term runs for three years from November first through October thirty-first.
You'll love the term.
Her term would, it would actually run from November first of two thousand and twenty-one through October thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-four. Welcome. Want to thank you for coming forward, looking to volunteer for the community, and just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're looking to serve.
I'm recently retired. I've been a farmer forever. I just took my barn clothes off. So I'm passionate about farming, about agriculture. We're very involved with the USDA and Connecticut Department of Ag. We have beef cattle, and I like to, we milk a little bit. I've been a four-H leader in the past. I would love to help promote agriculture in this town.
Thank you. I will open up for comments.
Thank you for wanting to serve our town, and it's nice to see that local small farms are growing in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Okay. Thank you. Always happy to see more farmers step forward.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for us?
Um, I do not. I'm, what I lack in experience, I could probably make up with enthusiasm. That's all I think about.
Thank you. We will be voting on your appointment on next Tuesday.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item up is citizen statements and petitions. If anyone would like to come up and make public comment, we just ask that you keep your comments pertinent to items on this evening's agenda. Ms. Claudia, did we have anything submitted?
We did not have any submitted.
Thank you. Last call for public comments. Seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda. We have nothing for old business, new business, six A, meeting with Economic Development Commission and Staff Liaison Jill St. Clair. Welcome.
Can both of these be on at the same time?
Okay.
I don't want to give you any feedback, weird feedback. Good evening. We're pretty excited to be in front of you again. Jay Lorette is on our Economic Development Commission, and Todd Cook, Bill Chang gives us regrets. He's in Hong Kong, celebrating the Chinese New Year, so it wasn't optimal for him to zoom in, but he, he's happy to have an opportunity as well to get in front of the commission, or the council. Did you want to kick it off?
I think we're going to talk about a little bit what's going on down around this area. Is that what you wanted me to chat about? Are we just talking in general? I, I don't want to upset the council. I think the last time I stirred some, ruffled some feathers, and that was not my intention, by the way, so I apologize for that. I didn't really.
We need, we need your input, how you feel.
Oh, good, good.
That's fine, I'm, you know.
Excellent. So, yeah, I mean, I came into it last time, just wanted to bring in a little bit of insight to what I look at in my world every day, and I am, you know, I, I was raised here in Killenly. I went to the Killenly school systems. I left for twenty years, I served in the military, got out, came home, couldn't find any real opportunity to live in this town of a work when I came back. So I ended up leaving, going away, other places, and came back to this town because my parents gave me the opportunity to buy their home, which was awesome. I still found it kind of challenging, though, at times to, you know, make ends meet around in this, in this area, we just don't have a lot of opportunities at times. So it was frustrating. I did finally figure it out, and I've been able to do very well here. Got into real estate and into mortgages, and I've done quite well now. And now I wanted to bring back and try to help my community when I got on the Economic Development Commission here, to try to bring some more, something back to this town that we used to have when I grew up here. It was fun. I know any of you that grew up here in this town, this town had a lot to offer when we went downtown, and there were shops to go to, and there were springtime festivals and all kinds of stuff that you had good memories about. So I wanted to kind of help bring some of that back, and that's why I've been volunteering on the economic development for a long time. Jill has been just amazing to helping bring back some of that to this town. It's just unbelievable what we've seen her do since I've been on the commission. I was, you know, on it before she came, I didn't know who Jill was till she got here, and I was like, oh my gosh, who is this person? And she's just been unbelievable. And we're starting to see some growth. We're seeing some things happen, and it takes time. Everything that we work hard on just takes a long time to get moving, but it's happening. And I'm starting to see, we're starting to see some of the results with the Brickyard that's going on, you know, that we hopefully are going to see some, some action on with the Main Street building that we all had to, you know, we watched go through a few cycles before we finally found the right person to, to do something with it that we think's going to work. And they're making some big progress with that building, seeing some cool things go on there. I can't wait to see that thing finished. I think it's going to start bringing other businesses are going to kind of spawn off of that and grow this downtown, and we're going to start seeing better quality of people coming to the downtown again who want to be part of this, and that's what I'm looking forward to seeing. And we're little by little inching our way towards that, and I think it's going to continue. So the support of the council obviously matters when we're talking about how do we keep this momentum going in the right direction and looking for responsible growth in our town. You know, we don't want to turn this into a city, we like the little small-town feel that we have, but we also want to make it so that people can enjoy it and live here, right? So we don't have to leave for twenty years and come back, right? That would be cool.
Unlike Todd, I'm from Putnam, so I still bleed blue a little bit, but, but I came over here saying that I've never moved to Killenly and kind of fell in love, raised my kids here, they're still in the school systems, I coach sports, I announce, very active in the community. And just like Todd said, it's, it's, we don't want a city. City atmosphere, I know there's been a lot of talk about why, you know, certain businesses in and stuff like that, but if you look at other surrounding towns that, I mean, I'm a, in the real estate world, and you hear a lot of other towns and their situations and their, what they're dealing with right now, that they don't have, they don't have that, that what we have going for us right now. And some, bringing some of this commercial in here, in the places that make sense, obviously. We don't want to take away farms and land and stuff like that, but putting it where it makes sense, I think is, is vital to, you know, creating a sustainable place. You know, I think a lot of people say, you know, COVID hurt, I think COVID exposed us, COVID showed us that we're not sustainable. And I think, you know, building a community where we're, you know, sustainable is the right move, and I think that's what we look at, we look at a lot of, you know, different things, does it make sense to put here? So, thank you.
Thank you.
So, we didn't really have a format. We are following up on a couple of questions we had the last time. So we have a brownfields kind of boot camp one oh one, there's a lot to unpack there. But you'll also see the P O C D. I was hired in May of two thousand and twenty, and your P O C D was adopted in two thousand and twenty. So that has been my, kind of my work-study package since I arrived. And so we matched up what was in the P O C D to actionable items, but it's not just economic development, a lot, nothing happens in a silo, some, sometimes it's interdepartment. You know, you'll see that I jump over with transportation on feasibility studies or opportunities for cultural arts. So sometimes the scope of work stretches into other departments. Infrastructure is a real concern right now with our wastewater treatment plant, we're at capacity, so in order for our businesses to sustain and, or even grow, we need to make sure that we kind of look forward, forward-thinking, capitalize on those opportunities that are, are made available to us. But not just what happens here, but what's happening regionally, and what can we bring to the community or spotlight what we are doing well. So I would want to open it up a little bit to Q and A before we get into the brownfield boot camp, because there's a lot there. You'll see a copy of your annual report. I changed the format before because before I arrived, it was just kind of a list of what was going on, it would be like, oh, Frito-Lay expansion, but it was never put in context. So when I, economic developers approach things all in a unique way, it's not a science. So for me, I use the breads model, I like bread, so I use bread. So it's business, retention, expansion, attraction, development, and development can be workforce, and it can be infrastructure, and S startups. So every day I kind of try and hit that bread model in the work that we do. Because, like I said, sometimes it's directed by the industries that are coming from, to us, sometimes it's from the residents, and sometimes it's just the market, what the market demand is. And so if you have any questions, the thing in the report that you'll see is that we had a big growth year on building permits, and some of that had to do with capitalizing on very low interest rates and development. I suspect this year is going to be the exact opposite. Seven percent interest rates, commercials up to eight, nine, people are just hitting pause. It doesn't mean that we're not growing or we're in crisis, people want to know what's going on, that's expensive money for lenders. You'll also see that for the first time historically, that our unemployment rate is very low. We are hovering right at the state rate, before we used to be four or five points above state. So that means employable people, people that are able to get to, to work, transportation, like we said, is a factor in that. But, you know, we, we're highly employed as a community, which is good. Our tax collection rate has been stable. You, you know, with COVID, you, you were thinking, oh, you know, people are going to have a hard time paying bills. They're paying their bills. That's a good indication, key performance indicators. Housing market, we, Todd tackled that last week, and so the, the disconnect between what, what's really out there, reality wages, you know, cost burden for housing. So you'll find that all in there, but feel free to ask questions as you digest it, or, you know, simply send Mary an email.
Yeah, so if I may, so Jill wanted to respond from an economic development standpoint with regards to each of the goals and initiatives and objectives within the P O C D. Clearly, planning and development is also working on their response as well, so that's going to be a separate response. I didn't want to hold up the economic development response to you. There's so much to digest in each of these, and there's so many factors between all the different departments, sometimes it's easier to kind of take it in the individual segments, and we'll ultimately compile it all into one, you know, final response, but this is the economic development lens, if you will, going through the P O C D and what action items have occurred or are being worked on in compliance with that P O C D.
Thank you. I will open up for any questions, comments from council?
I, I just have a comment. We have to remember what the destruction of towns were, it was big box stores, the big stores that can sell things at cheaper prices destroyed the corner grocery stores, destroyed many downtowns, and also a lot of these big box stores also destroyed some of the businesses in this area also.
Thank you. Ms. Wakefield, do you have anything? Tammy, I think you're muted.
Yeah, she's.
I'm unmuted. I, you know, I've, I've been going to most of the economic development meetings over the last year, couple year or so. I'm pretty, pretty impressed with, with, the town has slowly and continuously progressed. Things in Killenly do move really, really slow, but they, you know, at least it's moving forward. Forward develop, forward movement is better than stagnation. So, I'll be, it'll be nice to be able to get some of these brownfield areas cleaned up so that we can develop those areas, because, you know, they're already pretty much ready to, for development, they just need to be cleaned up, so.
Thank you.
I said, great segue. Cause the next thing up she has is brownfields, so just.
On the, on speaking of brownfields, coming from growing up in the Norwich area and seeing how much they've done as far as development of old mill properties and brownfields down there, I definitely feel that is, that is a key piece. I feel towns do need to have some growth, but we have to be cognizant of where the growth is and put it in the right places. Because if we're not having growth, the cost of operating the town, inflation every year goes up and up, and if we don't have some growth to help support the increase in costs of operating the town, then only option we have at that point is just raising taxes to all our taxpayers. So, so I definitely see it's, it's a balance, without a doubt, and it's just so important to make sure that any growth and development is not going to ruin the rural nature of our town and be put in places that are appropriate for it.
Absolutely. And so Killenly is not unique with brownfields, Norwich, there was, there's a hundred and sixty-four brownfield sites. And you take that and you multiply it, a hundred and sixty-nine municipalities, you know, how many are there? I was looking at the deep website, and they have eight hundred and seventy-four brownfield sites that are in some sort of program. That number is probably three times that that haven't been addressed yet or identified or have been entered into any sort of program. So if they were easy, they would all be remediated. And so I want to kind of walk you through a day in the life of what it would take to remediate a brownfield, and how competitive these applications are, and how important it is for a community to say, this is our top priority, and what kind of engagement, and what kind of resources are we going to throw at that? So resources can be engineering, it can be my, my department's time, it could be leveraging cost matches to brownfields, and most of them require some sort of community investment because they only have so much funds, and so there's a grading system of how many points you get on these applications, they're highly competitive. So if you want to go ahead and start, and we can unpack this, some of the language I'm going to use is lingo, so stop me if you don't understand something because it, it is a, a language in itself. So I figured I would start.
If she has the PowerPoint up on the screen, we will provide hard copies of this, so that you'll make sure, and we'll put a hard copy, we'll put a copy up on the website too, as well, for anyone that is interested in reviewing it.
Okay. So we'll start simply, what is a brownfield? Something as basic as that, that is a brownfield, farming, historical use of pesticides and herbicides. People don't think that farms can be brownfields. And so, next. So the, the definition, EPA's definition, is a property, a property might be a brownfield due to potential contamination and past uses that inhibit continued use or reuse of the site. Next, gas stations, petroleum, lead paint, those are historical appropriate materials of the time, but we've learned that they're later, they're toxic, they get in the air, they in the soil, and can get into the groundwater. Next, dry cleaners. The tricky thing about dry cleaners is it's not just that site, they have plumes and that, that, that perk, it was the chemical that was used, can travel underground, so it can affect properties that are abutting, a brownfield. So not only is the site specific a brownfield, the abutting properties can be a brownfield as well. Next, vacant lots, historical dump, you know, that, that long have been abandoned. And next, and it's not until you start digging around do you know, that's a, that's fifty-four tons of material that was taken out in a wooded area, that the only suspect was you had like hoods popping up. So sometimes you don't know what's underneath the ground, it, that's an abandoned site. So that is a classic example of community investment. The town council approved ARPA funds to do the remediation of that site, and it is taken to below industrial standards of contamination at this point.
Now, that's the one twenty-five Alexander Parkway.
That's the one twenty-five Alexander Parkway site. Next, and old buildings, that's our blue bill, building. Next. No, I know, I know, but I'm still grieving, I'm still grieving, that's my memorial. So why clean up brownfields? You know, protect human health and environment, academic development and the creation of jobs, construction jobs, and then at the end use, there's jobs created. It increases the property values of the abutters, the people in those neighborhoods, but also on the site. And often these brownfields, not always, but often these brownfield sites are historically located where there is existing infrastructure. There is water, sewer, roads, electrical capacity. So, next. So it sounds easy, right? Let's just kind of clean these things up. Next. But if they were easy, they would be done. So I'm going to start going through what the unique challenges of a brownfield site would be, and this would, you can take any mill site in, in this town. My glasses on. Okay, so the unique challenges of a mill redevelopment site. Potentially, there is millions of dollars of remediation costs. You don't know until you start doing the testing. So what happens if you go into a mill site? The first thing you need before you even do anything is called a phase one investigation. And that, what happens is you need to get it qualified by a qualified professional to go in and do the assessment on paper, what kind of documentation has been provided for that particular mill site. It can go back to the eighties, the seventies, right up until today. What's the historical, like genealogy of the kind of activity and who was involved in that, those projects? So that's the phase one, that's just a site review, a desk review, per se. And they, they time out. As you apply for these grants, they're only good for a hundred and eighty days, and you have to renew them, and people go, well, why? It's been, nothing's happening there. Well, you could have additional dumping, you know, residents could go in there and dump something, you know, I have this five-gallon oil tank, you know, I need to get rid of this. So that's why they require constant updating of these phase ones. Then the second one would be a phase two, and that is if you have cooperation from the property owner. All our mills are privately owned, we don't own them, and we don't want to own them, because when you own them, you own the problem. The problems transfer with the property. So the phase two, once again, you don't know the costs involved, what are you looking for based on your phase one, what kind of activities is there? Is it asbestos, is it lead, is it oil, is it metals, right? And you go through that. So you do the phase two. Phase twos can run anywhere between fifty thousand and a hundred thousand dollars. That's upfront costs. So phase ones, phase twos. You can apply for grants, the municipality can apply for grants if you have the, a cooperation of the property owner to do those investigations. Uh, usually about five to eight thousand dollars, depending on how extensive it is. Then you do the, those preliminary testing, and out of that, what you want to get is called an ABCA form, and it's an analysis of cost opinion. So you have all the testing done and said, hey, you know, you've got a petroleum. So you have all the testing done and said, hey, you know, you've got a, an, a petroleum spillage here, how many cubic ar- yards do you have? Um, what would the cost opinion be? Because when I apply for a grant, I don't know, I, if I'm asking for one million or ten million dollars. Um, and so, the more information I can bring to an application, the more success I'm gonna have in actually being awarded an application. Um, but like I said, every community in the state of Connecticut is battling for these, um, grants. Um, so another, so once we get through that, just the remediation costs, um, and who's gonna pay for that? Then you have the income stream, so if you had a developer that said, hey, I'd like to buy one of these mills, the cleanup and then the remediation doesn't, it doesn't equal to cost value, right? So, and we'll go through, I have a, you asked about a capital stack, I'll show you a little bit of a capital stack. So, cost of value differential is huge, so we have to figure out ways to bridge that gap. Um, and then most of these mill sites, some of this capital stack I'm gonna show you, is tied to housing, um, because that's part of the state initiative, they need more housing, aerospace, manufacturing, so they have, does your project align with the overall arching state initiatives? Um, and then you get more points for that, um, is it close to transportation? Um, because if we created a bunch of housing and, and it's out in the middle of nowhere, people can't get to the doctors, they can't get to the stores. Um, so there's a cost, uh, a point factor on the application. Um, so a lot of them are tied to housing subsidies, um, usually the ratio can be anywhere between twenty to thirty percent of those units, um, that you get for cost for building, um, is tied to affordability. Um, and which, you kind of want to keep that, because you want your affordability to be over ten percent for communities, so if you're building more housing, you need more affordable housing. In this community, about forty percent of our community is cost burden, um, so, uh, but most of the programs are tethered to that twenty to thirty percent of the units. And then, um, these buildings, because they're large pieces of property, usually the developer likes to phase them out as they get momentum, so they'll do one phase, fill it, get a cash flow going, and roll on to a second phase or a third phase. Um, some of the larger mill sites, um, that's the approach. Next. But, when you do that, that's what the developer needs to do, but in reality, you have to take care of the environmentals upfront, even if you're only gonna work on one section at a time, um, you need to have the infrastructure in there, instead of, um, you know, after the fact. You need to be running the remediation of the ground, because you're, you're putting people's lives at risk and health concern. And you need to harden the e- exterior of the buildings, maybe secure a roof or windows so that there's not blight. So then you have the marketability, why would one, somebody want to live next to that if they don't feel like it's safe, or it's gonna be a fire hazard or a blight? Um, so, those are still more upfront costs before you even start building anything. Um, then, uh, you know, that we talk about the lenders, um, the cost ratio to value, um, Todd could probably talk about that. Um, and then you have your, um, your cost from design to construction, there's variables and ratios for that when you do like a construction loan. Next. Alright, so, complicated financial structuring. So, if you have an existing mill, and you still have twenty percent of the remnants, that's the sweet spot. Um, if you have twenty percent of the historical value.
Twenty percent of the actual remaining structure?
Right, of the remaining structure, that has historical.
Value, okay.
So, say if you put a Quonset hut on it, and that remained, and the mill didn't, it doesn't count. It has to be the original historic value of the building. Um, if you have that, um, some of these, um, financing opportunities, and once again, this is all competitive, um, applications, you can apply for leveraging historic and federal tax credits, um, which offset, so, it, um, companies that have to pay capital gains, instead of paying this, writing a check to the state of Connecticut or the federal government, they can write it into a preservation fund, they don't have a fee interest in these mill sites, but it's yours to reinvest. And that's how they structured it to save some of these old buildings, otherwise, it's cheaper to just build new. Um, so, that was the incentive for people to tackle some of these buildings.
So Jill, this piece is what the developers, this is what the developers would apply for?
Yep, the developers would apply for this. Um, and then, um, you know, the, when you get there, the lenders, that, all these historic, um, organizations, they want to make sure that they're spending their bucket of money wisely, or allocating it wisely. Um, so, the more you can mitigate any sort of, um, risk or, um, unknowns, um, the more apt you are to get these kind of, um, credits. So we talked about the environmental investigation, individual property owners cannot apply for those, um, brownfield state funds, um, which makes sense, they want to make sure these, these projects come to completion, alright? And that the developers are just not gonna walk away and take the, the money and run. Um, you want to, uh.
Can municipalities?
Municipalities can apply for those, um, uh, not for the funds, but they can, for the remediation, they can, not for the historic tax credits, they can't. Then, uh, remediation costs, soft costs, all that pre-development, you know, what does your architectural design look like? What is your, the size of your pipe underneath for your infrastructure, all of those, um, cost money. Um, then there's contingency costs, like everything else, you know, it's the devil's in the details, um, and you're always in discovery mode with these old buildings, um, or old sites. Um, we can talk about financing fees, this is expensive money, um, construction money. Todd's shaking his head, yes, um, and then, uh, then there potentially could be acquisition costs, um, you know. A lot of these people are emotionally involved, uh, attached to their properties, they're, they're not gonna give them away, that they're not gonna, you know, they, they want money in their pocket, they made some sort of investment, so, um, that is what you're looking at, um, as far as kind of a complicated, uh, structure. Next. So, what kind of incentives, um, I'm gonna show you the, the price per square foot, um, I know that you were asking about that. So, um, historic tax credits, um, uh, state ones, give up to five million dollars per project, qualifying project, qualifying, um, components to the project, um, they will, they will pitch in. CHAMP, which is a Connecticut Comprehensive Housing Assistance, multifamily housing, um, they come out with twenty-five thousand dollars, twenty-five million a year. That does not go far, um, so that's competitive, and they cap that, um, resource at five million. Um, then you have the competitive brownfield, um, applications, and once again, if your application is kind of, it, it's a scoring, they're highly competitive, they come out with a bucket of money, I think, uh, they just, last year was thirty-one million. Um, they have rounds yearly, so you have to apply, um, and so all of this takes time. Um, it's, it moves the speed of a glacier, as far as I'm concerned, but it's moving.
Can I interrupt for a minute? So if you're talking about brownfields or contaminated areas, now, the housing authority, every time they go in and do a project, because the property was an orchard, and there's chemicals there, is there any way that some remediate? I don't know, they, I mean, there, there's such a shoestring budget over there, is there any way that, because they have potential, or there is brownfields, is there any way we can mesh to help them out in that regard?
I, I'm not aware that they've been asking for any sort of, it's when you disturb the ground, have they?
Every, every time they do a project, they have to do a phase-one.
Probably a phase-one, yeah. Uh, we can, we can reevaluate that, um, I don't think that they've looked at building, uh, components anytime in the near future, but anyway, that would be something for us to, we could look at that.
When I was there, that was another thing they would, you know, Carol would always, oh, we better, even though it's been done, but you're saying eighteen months, and I don't know, at that point, they didn't know what the timeframe was, and, okay, this, this passed away, now we're looking at something, and, oh, that's, all that upfront money.
So. And know that for the hu- for housing rehab funding, regardless of the history of the property, they require a phase-one.
Okay, I, I.
So it wouldn't matter, they're always gonna require a phase-one for that grant program, because they have to go through an environmental review, that is a requirement under HUD for, um, housing, so it doesn't, you know, even, even private residences, that have been a private residence the entire history of that property, still, we still have to complete a phase-one, um, environmental review. We have to still do an environmental review for housing rehabilitation grant funding, that's just part of that grant program. So it, th- tha- they wa- they would have to go through that irrespective of where they were ever placed, I, you know. I would be shocked that there would be continued contamination on the site, considering they developed housing on there. Um, they probably completed all of those processes, but because HUD requires an environmental review and a phase-one prior i- i- in, during the grant submittal process, you have to do it anyway, um, and it is upfront costs.
Um, okay, yeah, I, I mean, I'm not aware that they, um, were in a process of construction, um, so.
Well, they're not, but every, every time they, they were looking and doing something, and it's, and it's worse because of the pre- prior history, that.
Right.
So it's like, I don't know, this can mesh in with that, it's, I gotta help them whatever they can, we can grant them something, uh, you know.
Well, for more fun, um, the silos between housing and brownfield and where the intersection is gets a little bit trickier too. Um, but we'll go into, this is more to be like an overview, um, as opposed to, um, really getting into the weeds with the nuances of each and every one of these sites, but I'd be happy to take that on. Um, but we would be here, um, till four o'clock in the morning. Um, so, uh, local incentives, what can a community do? Um, fixing of assessments, that's where you freeze the assessment of a property and allow or make a, a tax abatement agreement, um, to keep more money in the developer's hands, um, while they go through developing, because they don't have a cash flow coming in. So there's a way to do that, we do have a fixing of assessment ordinance, which is amazing, um, uh, that those tools are in place. Um, then, uh, some communities, they do a reduction in the building permit fees, um, you know, to keep more money into the project, to keep it going, so that they can complete it, knowing on the other side of it, they're gonna get full tax value and an increase in tax value. Um, local incentives remediate environmental uncertainties prior to development. Um, you know, that's, that's an option for a community to do that, um, make that match, help, um, push these projects forward. Um, and know that, you know, brownfield funds are not available for private owners. Um, so every, you know, when you say, oh, they should do something about it, well, if they could, they probably would. Um, just because you can own a site may not mean that you have the pathway to capacity to redevelop it. Next. So, cost of doing a, um, a brownfield. So, last time we were here, Todd was talking about the price of housing. Um, the kind of cost per square foot right now is a hundred and seventy to two hundred and seventy square feet, uh, cost per square foot for a house. Um, so, if Bill Chang was here, he thinks it's more like three hundred, um, but, so, if you were to build a new house today, on, not on brownfield, a house, it would be about two hundred and forty thousand to five hundred and forty thousand dollars. Next. But mills are three times that amount, because of all those other variables, and we're not talking about remediation. We're saying, if you had a site that was a hundred percent remediated, what would it take, um, to rebuild it? Next, so, working on that variable of three times, you'd be about five-ten to eight-ten a square foot. Imagine how fun it would be if you went to a bank and asked for that, that kind of money, cost ratio, right? They would have a good laugh over a cocktail later, so how do you figure this out? Um, I know when the Maple Street mill that was done in twenty nineteen, um, those units ended up being about four hundred thousand dollars per unit, uh, for remediation. Next. Yeah, for, um, yeah, for, um, construction, sorry, um, yeah, there was, um, state funding involved in that. Alright, so if we were gonna take a mill, similar to the size of Blueville, in order for that to be rebuilt, it's fifty-one thousand square feet, it would have been a twenty-six to forty-one million dollar project, and that would have, there was, um, early plans back in two thousand and seven, I believe, on that mill, and they had, uh, fifty-three units in there. Um, so, that would average out, if we took the average, about six hundred and sixty thousand dollars per unit. Let's try and find funding on that project.
Is this what the COPD was based on, then, like, weren't we thinking about the mills, so?
You mean the POCD?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, this is just going over what the actual cost is for redevelopment. So when you're looking at a mill site, um, mills typically, they, they cost a lot more for a developer to redevelop, and this is just trying to walk through the capital stack. In our POCD, we did always identify our, those mill sites as a prime opportunity for development, because they had been previously developed sites, and they are not disturbing open spacelands or anything like that. And so, they're usu- I think all of them predominantly are right at, um, full infrastructure, so they wouldn't be, uh, you know, they would be a, be able to connect to existing infrastructure without having to have new inst- installation of infrastructure, um, that would potentially, you know, cause disruption, so. Um, and by looking at those sites, um, as a community, and saying that those brownfield sites, we want to see them move into housing, housing is the highest level of remediation. That's the highest environmental justice that we can reach, as opposed to saying, we want them as industrial sites, right? That's a much lower threshold of remediation, so, by having that as our goal, we are actually providing the community with the highest environmental justice that we can get, by designating them as a priority for housing. Also, then, by prioritizing as a housing and putting, say, fifty-one units on that site, um, you're not hav- you know, if you were to take fifty-one single-family homes and distribute them across, you know, East Killenley, you're disturbing a lot of, a lot of land, a lot of, a lot of natural habitat. This would condense that into an existingly developed site, um, that already is attached to that infrastructure, and you're not having to install all that infrastructure all throughout the area. It's, it assists in keeping that rural character of the, of the town, and actually by having it through a lot of these programs, especially with those historic tax credits and stuff like that, they're required to keep the historical nature, which is why, like, you see, um, the, you know, the, the one on Maple Street, it's a brick facade, it's that brick mill-looking type structure, it keeps that similar characteristic of those, um, throughout. So it kind of helps to retain some of that quality, um, within the community, um, without dispersing these units, you know, all over the forest.
No, I was totally for the plan, I'm just wondering now, looking at the money, so, was the plan based on the most expensive thing, like?
Well, I mean, it's, um, it's always.
Which still might be the way we want to go to save the forest, I'm just trying to clarify.
It's always gonna be expensive, um, whether it's housing, or, I mean, commercial, it may be a little bit less, but you have industry then that are going in that has subsequent, uh, costs associated with that, so, um, you know, you really want to see the community have the most remediation, the most environmental justice, so, um.
Yeah, you get more money for that too, right?
Right, but, uh, so we've always focused our development on those mill, those mill sites have always been targeted for development.
Now, so, with, um, those mill sites, the, what the capital stack I'm gonna sh- I'm gonna show you cannot be utilized for commercial. Um, all those tax credits go away, um, it's on the onus of the developer. So if you were a commercial developer, do you want to take on this kind of project, or would you go on, on raw land? Um, and they're gonna go raw land, because it's much cheaper, um, to construct, um, so, that's why you see.
No, I get there and I'm looking at our plan and what our plan was, and so, that's what I'm trying to clarify, uh.
It's infill of those mill sites.
Correct, um. Was all this grant planning part of that plan, like, did, was that gonna be built into that?
So the POC doesn't speak to grant applications or any of that, it really just speaks to utilization of land throughout and just overall vision of the community, it doesn't, it doesn't. Land throughout and just overall vision of the community, it doesn't, it doesn't, um, necessarily dictate. Um, you know, it could be a commercial use that goes into those, uh, mill sites, it could be housing units. It doesn't specifically dictate that it has to be any one of those things, um, our zoning regulation really dictates. What can and cannot, you know, commercial can only be in certain locations, so the POCD isn't written to the extent of saying. Uh, we have to apply for grants in order to be able to remediate that, it just speaks to. The desire of the community to have them remediated and then further developed. That's what the POCD is written for.
I just remem- when it was presented, it was specifically for housing, I think, right? Does anybody else remember that?
Um, actually, it was.
Remember, I could be wrong.
Um, it was, uh, in the POCD, it, it's, it shares a number of different options for those, which is housing, retail. Space, um, so there's a number of different things, but housing is always your highest remediation. And one of, you know, a high, a highest goal for environmental justice to the community.
I do have one question, um, while we're talking about housing and commercial. If it's, uh, a mill site that's getting redeveloped and it's gonna be a mixed-use space. How much, is there a percentage that has to be housing as opposed to commercial to be able, to be eligible? For, um, all the grant funding, or does it have to be strictly housing?
Yeah.
So it can't be mixed-use?
It can't be mixed-use, um, it, for those tax credits. Um, all of that goes on the backs of the developer, and but some of the developers want that option, you know, you, if you create housing units. Then they want that added value, right, they wanna put a coffee shop in or something like that, um, so they usually phase it out. And usually, the, in my experience, the first two phases is housing, and then the third would be mixed-use. Because now they have the cash flow, um, to support the further development, and it adds that quality of place for that particular site. Um, so, we were up in Thompson this morning, they have the bill, big mill site, and it's seven hundred and fifty thousand square feet of mill. And thirty six thousand is going to be reserved for commercial, um, but they're not gonna use public funding for that, they can't, it doesn't qualify. Next. Okay, so, this particular, this is what a, um, capital stack would look like, alright, so we're gonna start at the bottom. We're gonna start with a twenty eight million dollar project, this was a project I worked on a few years ago. So, if you start at the bottom, twenty million dollars, that's a hundred percent of the project. So, I'm gonna work backwards, where you see the Xs on the right. Um, we're gonna start with, first of all, the developer's equity, how much money has the developer put into this for schematic plans? Architectural design, purchase of the property, you know, what has the developer brought to the table? Then they're gonna apply for, based on their development plans, because they, they've done their architectural design plans. They're going to apply for federal historic tax credits. Those particular programs, they're gonna wanna know, what kinda windows are you using, what kinda shingles, what's the exterior look like? Because they want to preserve the building, um, to the style, you know, of the neighborhood and of the construction of the building. Um, then there's state historic tax credits, the five million dollar cap, they apply for those. Um, these, these are, take time, um, we just did the one forty Main Street, they applied for, um, federal and state historic tax credits. It's taken them three years, which is lightning speed compared to other projects, um, but they have a, they have a relationship. Um, with the state, um, Parker Benjamin, they, they know this process. Um, but they went back and forth over nine months over windows, what kinda window, well, the supply, we couldn't get it because of the supply chain. Can we try these windows, back and forth? Then, uh, the developer often doesn't take money, um, they leave the money in the project. So they're not drawing a fee, so that's their equity, they're putting in there, um, into the project. Um, they will get it over time as the rentals come in, but that's skin in the game that they have. Um, so if you add up where all those Xs are, that's about fifty four percent equity, now you can go to a bank. Um, the state, um, CHAMP program comes after, you know, after you have all these approvals, that money comes in later. But you can add it to your hundred percent financing, so now you've got a, you know, where's your gap? It's your commercial loan, the, um, eight point three million dollars, it's twenty nine percent of the project. Now you can go to the bank, now you're ready, still you're risky, but now the commercial lender's gonna say, okay. If we get stuck with this, we have all of this in the capital stack, and we're not left holding the bag on a project. That we never wanted to invest in anyways, right, so you have to get really creative with these capital stacks. Next. So, how do you get that, bridge that eight hundred ten, five hundred and ten dollars square foot down to a bankable project? That's how you do it, with that capital stack, sounds easy, right? Um, next. Um, so, you know, it sounds easy, but then, the key here is developer capacity. Um, just because you own a property doesn't mean you have capacity, these are not for the faint of heart, I'm gonna grab my sheet. Um, so the questions you would ask yourself is, does the developer have liquidity? Do they, can they carry the cost of this kinda project and not get paid for years in advance? Um, so there, are they qualified to do something like this? You know, these are, these are heavy investments, um, do they have the experience for these complicated federal tax programs? The tax initiative might not be available this year, but it's gonna be available next year, or they're gonna get it in stages. Um, can they withstand the market changes, you know, like, we saw that happen, there's a lot of projects that have been tabled. Because when they started them, and they got their capital stack, and then the escalation of labor costs and material costs. Do they have that kind of, uh, bandwidth to carry something like that? Next. Um, so winning formulas, um, so it can be done, um, and through competitive, competitive grant processes. I can tell you that, the three, three of our mill sites right now, we have active EPA engagement. Um, and, uh, so that's exciting, do they move fast enough? No, um, different stages, um, grant money can't be used for necessarily what we need at the time. There's different grant rotations, some are just for assessments, then you have to wait a calendar year. Then you can apply for remediation, then you wait for a calendar year, um, sometimes it's rubble removal. Um, but we have to know, we have to retest, what we test before it burnt down and what's there now could be totally two different things. Um, so you need to go, almost go back through the process all over again. I feel very fortunate that we have the engagement of EPA and DEEP, um, on these sites, like I said. Um, they have a lot to do, um, throughout Connecticut, so what is a winning formula? It's just, um, figuring out what the community wants, what's our level of investment, um, patience, time. Uh, working through that process, um, public involvement, the more people know, the more invested they get in these projects. Um, you know, the better off we are, we have been working with the Yukon TAB program, they have set a website up for us. Or a hyperlink to their program, um, and you'll see it, there's a sheet, I, I gave it to you early on when we were awarded that grant. Um, and you go to the landing page and it's just about Killingley, there's only EPA only awarded two communities in New England. That opportunity, we were one, and then there's a community in Maine, so you go to that site and it's a four or five minute video. Anyone can go to it, um, and it'll tell you, what is a brownfield? People hear it, they don't understand what it is, and then the second part is as we go through these kind of discussions. That'll be a, a uniform landing page, people can go, they can give feedback, concerns, um, how to get involved. Um, and so, we want that, um, especially the people that live in those neighborhoods that have to look at that every day. Next. Yep, so it's a worthwhile endeavor, that was remediated, now we have a, a purchase option on that, next. Um, that's what it looks like today, um, next. And there's the, um, citizens input, that's what it'll look like, every Friday during tax season, I'm gonna be at the library, just engaging with the public. Um, people can ask questions, um, how can they get involved, where do they get the information? Um, so it's really important for people to, um, ask questions, um, if they don't understand, um, ask about process. Um, so it's really about the will and the support of the community to get these things done, um, and the cooperation of the property owners. So we could, we could have the best plan, um, but do we have the cooperation of the, the property owners? Um, and then if we don't, what are we gonna do about it? Um, and that's where EPA has enforcement that the town probably doesn't want to take on the legality of that. Um, it can be very costly and, um, you can spend decades in court litigation on those kinda things. So, that's kind of a overview. I hope I didn't throw too much all at once. Do you have any questions?
So, if, if the, so if you have an absentee land, landowner. Really, you can't do anything. Well, I mean, you can do, or if EPA decides to go in, they could do a remediation to say there's potential here?
Yeah, two different things, so if you have an abandoned mill site, um, or absentee, um, there are. There, whi- which we have. But the only way to engage, say, EPA or a Connecticut brownfield, is if you have a viable developer. In the wings, working in concert. Um, because they're not gonna activate, they're like, why are you wasting our time, we have a project over here, we can put funding in because we have a cooperative. You know, landowner, or we have a, you know, we have more traction in one area than another. Um, the other question, you said something about, um.
On that, though, how do we have involvement? With the EPA, is there a developer in the wings?
Um, so, Blueville, it's an active investigation, so they, they're involved. Um, we did do, we did have the cooperation of the landowner, um, to do the first round, it was a, back in, what was it? Um, twenty twenty one, we were awarded a targeted assessment grant, so I wanted to, um, we targeted. Um, the structural integrity of the building, um, and invite, uh, phase two, environmentals. Um, and we were allowed to get on the property, um, in cooperation.
Yeah, see, that's a big issue, they gotta be, you gotta have cooperation with the property owners. I, I don't know, you know, you got a potential here, this funding, and they can get out of an issue, a situation that is way beyond their means.
And that's where sometimes, you know, our conversations with existing property owners, um, sometimes, um. They think that if they don't do testing, then they're not liable, or they're, you know, they. They, they, they can't be forced to do anything about it, so it's educating them on, you know, really what their true liability exposure is. By, you know, just being the property owner and how, you know, the town can assist, so the town can assist in getting grants. To be able to go through that process of remediation, the existing property owner is pro- is not eligible for those same grants, right? So if they partner with the town, then we can help walk through some of that process, right? And so sometimes it's just really scary for a property owner that may have come in possession of one of these properties that. Maybe didn't quite realize what they ended up owning, um, and so they're, you know, it's a bit intimidating to, when you start talking about. Environmental exposure and remediation and, you know, uh, so we try and, you know, try to walk through what that, um. You know, what that may be and just trying to educate around that. Um, you know, the other side of the spectrum that we tend to find, um, with property owners of mill sites like this is that. The property owner has, um, a vision of what they believe the property is worth, or what they believe the property could be. Um, and, uh, it's, it's, uh, unrealistic. Um, it, they don't necessarily have capacity to attain that, um, they're expecting to have a developer just come in and. You know, basically bankroll them for their entire retirement, and, um, that doesn't happen unless you have all of these questions answered. And so, you know, some will listen to that education around, let's, let's partner together on trying to be able to really get you to where you wanna be. You know, the person doesn't necessarily wanna own this property, they wanna see it move into some other, uh, state of development, and they wanna, they wanna sell it. It's just a disconnect between what they believe the current value of the property is and the existing condition that it's in. Um, they think that they're selling the property as a finished product, right, which is two very different values, right? So we, we kinda walk through those educations, and sometimes that just takes a lot of additional conversations with the property owners, right? Sometimes, um, you know, it can be really a scary conversation for sometimes for property owners when they. Start talking through what some of this is, you know, it's big, it's big dollars when you start talking through some of this stuff, and if the property owner wasn't. Necessarily aware of, um, what they purchased, the, you know, some of it, you know, one of them is, you know, they acquired it through a foreclosure. It wasn't that they necessarily recognized what they were, um, holding, um, that can be, that can be a different thing. Or you have a developer that, you know, saw a site and they went, oh yeah, I can, you know, cause they're used to doing, you know. Residential flips, so they see something like this and they think, oh, this is a great opportunity, I can do this, and they're just in over their heads. Um, and the first instinct is to stick their head in the sand and go, I'm not even talking about it. Um, and so we have to kinda try and educate and walk through that, in order to be able to start getting the access. To be able to begin going through some of these, and educate them that the discovery process. We walk through these various grant opportunities that the town may be eligible for, that they may not be eligible for, and. Even if they don't do the discovery, even if they don't, they're still liable for what's there, right? Um, so it's not a matter of, but if the test comes in positive, now I'm liable, well, you're liable anyway, it's there, you know? Um, and so that's the scary part of trying to kinda walk through that and how we can partner together, and Jill's very good about, um, you know, trying to help and educate. Um, wherever they might be in their thought process around their property.
But then, the other thing, if we develop for housing, a transportation system in town. Is, is just not there, I mean, how do we, you know, there's no public transportation and we have a MECO, but that's not. That's disregard that, there's, there's no bus service per se, you know, like.
But, so if you had, if you, say, one of the, the bigger mills on a state road, right? You could have the bus swing in, all of a sudden, that would qualify as a transit center. Um, it's just so people have access, um, if it's close to employment centers, there's sidewalks. There's infrastructure there, that can qualify, because the state of Connecticut, uh, has recognized that. There's a world of difference between Hartford and, say, Sterling, right? Um, so they've loosened up those, that understanding, that rural transportation looks very different than public transportation. Um, they're even starting to talk about micro-transit, um, which is, they're normalizing Uber. Um, so it's, it's gonna take a little time, but, um, they're worthwhile investments.
And there's a lot of bikes that people can ride nowadays too, to where you wanna go to your job. You know, I see people, you can ride electric bikes nowadays and scooters and, you know, so that's, as long as you're not too far from where you're working.
Right, and that's that proximity, how close is wherever that development is to, um, an employment center.
But cleaning up the, you know, that's the incentive, clean, we're cleaning up the brownfield and creating, we need housing. Creating up the brownfield and not going out into the, way out in the outer limits of town and. Taking extra acreage that we could leave for open space, so I, this is, but it's to get this going, but it's big money.
What, I, I'm sorry, when the testing's done, and you said the hesitancy, you know, the, the, the property owner is liable anyway. So, you, you do the testing, is the property owner, when they're liable, is, are they forced then to start the remediation on their own?
No, no, so, we would, you know, they do the testing, and then we start going, like Jill said, there's, you know, like, the year after that is when we start applying for grants. So the town can apply for grants on behalf, uh, to basically start moving forward on the process with remediation. So that happens in a lot of mill sites, that happened, uh, um, the. So that happens in a lot of mill sites. That happened at, um, the, uh, Maple Street one. Um, the town actually applied for remediation, uh, costs and we administered that grant for remediation of that site. Um, so, but still, it's that, it's that initial knee jerk, right? Like, I don't wanna do the testing because then I'm gonna know definitively what's there. And now I feel like it has, you know, it has to be addressed right away and you do, you do wanna, uh, everybody's gonna wanna address it. But once we know what it is, then we have the capability to start putting the dollars around it. That, that cost analysis, uh, the qualified cost analysis that we would get. Um, then helps drive those next grant applications, which the existing property owner is not eligible for at all, right? So, like, even the town, when, you know, one twenty-five Alexander Parkway, right? Uh, we owned that. We weren't eligible to apply for brownfield grants because we owned it. Um, and so that's where we ended up utilizing the ARP funds for that. Um, because we didn't have to apply, you know, that, that was a different type of funding. But we weren't el- we wouldn't have been eligible for any of that grant remediation funding for Brownsfields because we were the property owner. Um, and so these property owners kind of are stuck in that. Um, and that's where we try and go through that education process of, let's get through the phase two, let's identify, and then we can move on to remediation.
And you get rewarded for cooperation.
Right.
Um, so that's the crazy thing about it. You're not, it's not punitive. If you cooperate, there's a pathway forward. Um, so it's a collaboration between public and private investment, um, to go on that pathway. And, um, that's why it's baffling to us. We, we offer solutions. We're here. Let's offer a solution. Um, and it's helpful if you have, um, in the point system, do you have someone with capacity? So if you, if we clean it up, what's gonna happen to it? Is it gonna just stay the way it is? Or are you going to spur economic development and do something with it? Um, so it's this balance, um, this recipe, uh, for lack of a better word, of moving these things forward.
Right, and you may have an interested developer, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they, that the town has agreed to a development.
Mm-hmm.
Right? That, that development, nothing has been, uh, proved or, or, you know. They don't get a fast track through the local, um, town's approval process, so they still have to go through inland wetlands. They still have to go through planning and zoning. They still have to go through all of those processes. It's just that they can, we're demonstrating to those grant, um, those, uh, grant programs. That there is a developer that has an interest, an active interest in moving forward with that. That would have capacity to manage a property like this, right? So, um, you know, it's not that they've gotten all the way through, they don't have a conceptual design yet or anything like that. It's just that they are starting to express direct interest in, well, if we knew some additional answers, you know. And maybe when those additional answers come out or reme- remediation happens, that developer backs out. There's nothing tying that developer to this. There's no, you know, the town doesn't guarantee the developer anything. The developer isn't guaranteeing the town anything, right? It is really just, you know, hey, kinda think this looks pretty good. It might fit into my portfolio kind of thing, right? Um, that's really what we're demonstrating to them is that there has been peaked interest on the property. But nothing is solidified or guaranteed in either respect.
So even though they, they know upfront, the owner, that you're there to help, that they could get remediation. They're skeptical, and yet if it does go through, they want, they want the selling price to be the price as if it was fully completed. Is that what I'm wanting to say?
Uh, sometimes, sometimes. They have stars in their eyes and we have to give them a little Visine. Um, but, um, sometimes it's, they've acquired the property and they're, they just didn't know. Um, and s- sometimes these projects, they went forward and they were going to say, oh, I'm going to do a project. And then they realized the cost headwinds were so great that they just abandoned it. And then you get litigation within, on the backside of it. Um, so they have to work through their process of, you know, I'm showing you, you promised me this, and, um, and then. We're, the community is just on pause. Um, and that, that is, that happens more often, um, as well. I've seen that as a historical kind of pathway as well.
You could acquire something through, and you obviously would have someone helping you with the sale.
You would be amazed at how people acquire property and have no idea what they acquired. Yes. I've seen, I've seen mill properties transact at tax sales, not here, but at tax sales. They literally are sitting in this room, they see the property address, they know nothing more than the property address, and they bid on it. And they buy it. And then they go and look at it and they're like, oh, wow, I bought this? I mean, I've seen somebody purchase, actually at one of our tax sales here, a sliver of land that was, I think, not even ten feet wide. In between two parcels of land. One of the neighbors happened to bid on it, or she thought that one of the neighbors was gonna bid on it. And so the person bid on it, paid a good amount of money for it, had absolutely no idea what they were buying. They walked out of here, went down and looked at the property and came back and they said, this is what I bought? Tax sales, you're required to do your own due diligence, but you'd be amazed at how many show up at tax sales that don't even look at the property. Or they see somebody else in the room bid on the property and they think they got a goldmine there and they just start bidding on it. And now all of a sudden, it's a person that has zero capacity to handle a property like this. They have no idea what they've bid on. Um, and that has happened, um, and that happens a lot with these brownfields sites. Is because you end up with an abandoned, you end up with a b- abandoned owner, they stop paying taxes, it ends up going onto a tax sale. And then somebody is completely, just they don't do their due diligence and they blindly buy it. And then we restart this clock all over again, 'cause now we have a whole new property owner that now goes through the phase of, I'm gonna stick my head in the sand for a while. And then I'm gonna talk to you guys and then, you know, so we end up having to reset this clock over and over again, every time we have a, a transaction like that.
How many do we have in Carolina?
How many brownfields?
Yeah.
Um, so it depends on where you look.
Yep.
Um, you don't, it, it be.
That are more memory related that could be used for housing.
So it, it gets a little tricky. You can suspect something's a brownfield, but unless it has gone through the process of being identified as a brownfield. You can't call it a brownfield because, um, you could say, alright, I had an oil spill at my residence. Ooh, that's a brownfield. No, well, it was this big and I put kitty litter on it, kind of thing. So, um, I, I know Yukon came down before I got here and there was thirty-six sites in town. That potentially could be a brownfield, um, but.
That's not all mill sites, though.
No.
Yeah, it could be anything. It could be gas stations.
Those are just sites.
Sites. Um, so as far as the mills, I mean, this feels heavy, but I'm actually inspired. And, um, I keep, you know, fighting the fight every day because we have EPA's engagement on three of our major, um, brownfield sites. Um, so to have the attention of EPA, like I said, what the landscape looks like, um, we're very lucky, um, as a community. That they've, you know, come forward, they wanna help, um, we wanna go through process, each one of these grant rounds, they're there to help. So even though it doesn't look like anything is happening, there's things happening in the back.
So with Blueville, with the building there, that would have been a great opportunity.
Yeah.
So once you have no building, now it's, it's really.
You wanna make her cry, don't you, Ed?
There was so much effort put into, I just wanna say, there was effort put into that. And that's all gone because you have no building to even start with.
Yep, and we got a pile of rubble.
When you have that rubble pile and some of the, all the others are basically the same now, you, you don't even have a starting point. I, I don't, it, I'm looking at zero starting point, you.
Well, we have EPA on enforcement, so they're going to chase down whatever resources they have and, uh, to, to kind of help us. They don't wanna leave us another, they're not abandoning us. Um, they were invested in this property. They, you know, they, they gave me the phase one, the targeted assessment. They knew that when we did the multi-purpose grant, Blueville was on there. Um, so, you know, it's their loss as much as ours, so they're willing to help.
They have some skin in the game. They don't want, alright, maybe that's where I'm going with this.
Yeah.
They, we started, we got a major devastation situation, but they're there and.
Yeah, and you know, E, the process with EP and D, it is a slow process. They have steps that they have to take on their end, they have timelines that they follow on their end, especially on the enforcement side. Um, you know, there's, uh, you know, processes that they have to go through with, um, you know. Uh, connection or attempted connection with property owners. So they, they have to do all of that due diligence before they can just come in and, um, and take over a property. So, you know, we.
Then they have funding.
Right.
They have, they have funding calendars too, so we, they, they don't know how much money they're going to get, um, so that they can allocate. Um, so there's that cycle as well. Because that, that one grant that we got in twenty twenty-one, the work didn't start until twenty twenty-three.
Right, well, that's.
Yeah.
What's the, what's the tax benefit to the town if that project could have ever got off the ground and finished? Where, where they, is that a big tax benefit to the town over time?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, I mean, you're looking at, you know, instead of a tax value or an assessed value of, you know, maybe a couple hundred thousand dollars. To, you know, uh, you know, potentially twenty, thirty million dollars. Um, that's completely different, you know, it's a, that's a very different, um, tax benefit, um, to the town. Um, you know, and it also, you know, um, if, if it were to be done in a, in, for housing. Um, then, you know, you do have that additional, uh, variation in your housing that, um, you know. Mul- different generations are looking for that, um, different style of housing, right? Um, you know, some really, they don't wanna have, uh, those, those larger upkeeps of larger, you know, larger standalones. Um, but, um, the taxing implications, and then also you have the trickle-down effect, right? Like, you have, um, individuals in the, in the community that are now also helping to support, you know, the, the shops that are hopefully gonna be, that are gonna be opening here on Main Street. That are trying to get through their process here on, opening on Main Street and, and supporting, you know, all of our other, uh, businesses in town. There's that trickle-down effect of the, you know, kind of what I call that economic.
Multiplier.
Multiplier that, that comes out. But, you know, grand list alone, you would have a substantial in- increase to the grand list just on the development. Just on the construction value of that, that development. And that's keeping the existing footprint of that mill. That's not like taking the existing footprint and adding on a whole bunch of additional pr- building on the side of it. Just keeping that existing footprint of the mill, um, would, you know, would, would be generating a substantial amount of, um, revenue, tax revenue.
But it's just the delay, that's the delay that has to happen.
I, I am inspired though by what happened with that one forty Main Street, 'cause that was a collaboration between the town and, and private funding. Uh, we went through a few phases on the economic development. We learned some lessons. We had bought, purchased the building, sold it to someone who we didn't, who we thought were gonna develop it, and they didn't have the capacity. We had to take it back and we learned lessons. And we got someone there now who really does have the true capacity, and I'm watching it develop all the time, and it's unbelievable what they've done.
And, you know, the town did actually invest in remediation on that site, you know. So the town did try to bridge some of that gap, um, with that site.
The phase one and all that stuff was completed by the town initially.
Correct, and we identified where the remaining remediation needed to happen. And that's really what kind of got it over the hump into a developer that actually had capacity. They weren't scared off by those things, 'cause we were able to really be able to, we didn't, we were able to identify specific locations of what that final remediation needed to be. So then they could quantify costs, right? And so then those question marks were answered and then that risk exposure comes down because they know what that is. And, you know, uh, you know, we worked with them in helping them, you know, with the historic tax credits. Um, and identifying the historic relevance of that building to the downtown and why it was important to maintain it in a historic nature. 'Cause it wasn't, that building was not on the historic registry. It's not on any historic registry. Um, and so the, we as the community, we as the town assisted by, you know, documenting and, and showing the historical relevance. Of that being on our Main Street, providing those historical photos of its historical re- relevance. And maintaining that historical character of our Main Street was really important. And that's, you know, how they were able to really continue to maintain that outward experience.
Could you remind me, so, 'cause I am a little bit confused about, uh, the process and whose pays, did we pay like phase one, phase two, and then remediation?
We did phase one and phase two. We then had, from there, the, with the phase two was where the cost, so all of the remaining. We knew what remediation needed to be done and the cost associated with that was completed. So the Economic Development Trust paid for those components, um, on that building.
I'm still confused. So did we pay for one, two, did we pay?
We did not pay for remediation.
Okay.
It came, the phase two gave the developer where the final pieces were and the, and the potential cost for remediation. The fa- the, uh, developer did the remediation. We also, while we owned it, we did replace the roof on that building.
Right, that was through a facade grant, right?
That was through a facade grant, but we did use a, so we utilized a facade grant to replace the roof on that building.
But talking about that building, it's, it's very difficult sitting here, you know, at a meeting and buy the building. The next morning, it's like, what did you people do last night? Um, and, but no, you know, again, it's taken a lot of years. But, but that building was vacant for so many years and i- it's like, you're getting hammered from a, a lot of different people. And my tax dollars, you know, but eventually, when it gets on the tax rolls, it does bring back a significant amount of money.
It does.
So we have to put something in.
Invest.
And, and have, you know, have a foresight that we're gonna get something back. We just can't.
Right.
So when we bought it and then the first developer backed out, oh man, I, I, I took a beating on that one.
Yeah, and that's really hard as council members because, you know, you are looking more globally and long vision on these. And as we've said over and over again, these properties take a long time to get there, right? It's not, and we are, let's face it, we are in a very instant gratification society, right? We wanna, you know, close on it and the very next day, you know, everybody watches HGTV, right? And we're gonna have the HGTV episode and poof, there you go. And that's not how these sites work. They are, they are very time-intensive and they take a very long time. And that is challenging for all of you sitting in the seat because you guys are making decisions around investing. Either supporting grant funds, which maybe not be town, you know, specifically town, but still tax dollars, investing in those grants. And, and investing, you know, our time into moving those, those processes forward. Um, to ultimately see that final end goal, right? How do we eventually get there? And you guys, in the interim, you guys take a beating, you know, it isn't happening fast enough. It looks terrible still and all of that, and they don't see what's happening in the background all the time, um, in the background. So, you know, we're very cognizant of, you know, that.
So I wanted to tell Ed, um, that particular project, it never went off the tax rolls. They've been paying a hundred percent tax. Um, their development plan back in twenty twenty was one point eight million dollars they were putting into that building. And it's taken almost four years to go through the process. They haven't made a dime. So that, that's when you talk about capacity and trying to leave money in the developers.
The timeframe is, is.
Hands, so they can get there.
Yeah.
So they can get there.
It's American.
We're happy to tell you it's a hundred percent leased on the first floor. Um, we're just waiting on COs.
Well, see, that's what you have to sell to help us. It's leased now. How do you flag that? Now we, we've got tenants in this first floor and it's generating more.
Yeah.
Then.
People are gonna see that pretty quick.
Yeah.
It's gonna make a big difference.
Yeah.
You need multiple different restaurants, you need a lot to open.
Yeah.
I've been saying that for a few years. You can't just have one or two.
No.
We need a bunch. Uh, when you drive through here on a Saturday.
That's gonna be a game changer.
Sometimes I see no one.
Yep.
That building, that building's gonna be a game changer down here.
Not a person, not one person sometimes.
Yeah.
We walk our dogs a lot and it's odd to me that you could have a downtown on a Saturday that I don't see a single person. That that's, that, that should be impossible in this day and age.
Yeah.
Well, that's the thing that we've always, you know, spoke about in economic development is the chicken and the egg. You know, what do you do? You bring the businesses in first, you bring the people. But on Main Street, we have ten thousand cars passing daily with nobody engaging in the downtown. So the Brickyard was, uh, you know, a big part of that. It's gonna be, it's gonna create places for people to, to, to come, to enjoy. The businesses are gonna be there. I mean, it's, it's just all gonna fall into place.
And that was another, um, the Brickyard project. I know you're newer to this, um, yeah. So it's that, um, place-making, but that was public investment and private investment. So that was a million dollar state grant, um, and then we have, um, Economic Development Trust and we have a capital stack. Um, and that should be breaking ground April, May.
So maybe at some point, when, when you're, when you're at the annual town meeting, I guess, would be the thing, at some of these, we have some of these. now it's generating, maybe you wanna, that would be a good thing, it, it took ten years, but now we're getting revenue from something. How to make it that we did the right thing? That it, it sells it, and, cause that's the time, look at, they're looking, and everybody's got mill rate on their mind. But all of a sudden, when they see, we're getting, uh, you know, that increased the grand list. So it keeps our mill rate contribution down.
That's the goal.
Yeah, I mean, but you, we, you know, you, we wanna say we have investment, but if you could show up, maybe show a particular project somehow, that was just the, we did do something, it wasn't.
We're always doing something.
I just think how long it took from, you know, where we started with these projects to finally starting to hopefully see it come to fruition. It's a long process.
Yeah, and you know, another thing that, you know, with economic development and I know that Jill doesn't have, you know, a thing prepared on this, but another um program that we've been, that Jill has been operating with is the Small Business Academy. And that, since the inception of that Small Business Academy, so this is a small, this is a free educational course, that entrepreneurs, small business owners, that maybe they're looking to expand or maybe they're looking to initiate their business. For the first time, they can go through the Small Business Academy. And since the inception of that, we've had twelve brick and mortar businesses open up here in Killingley, small businesses. Um, that, you know, um, you know, would they have eventually opened up, maybe, but they, they opened up with solid tools, to be able to be sustainable for the long term, right? And having that be able to be that additional support to those small businesses, or those businesses that are small, that are looking to expand, they may be a home based business, that they're ready to make, they wanna make that step into brick and mortar. And they need to be able to go in with their eyes wide open on how to do that. And that's another thing for economic development and, you know, that's been a true investment, um, from uh this community into growing that small business base as well. Um, which has definitely been very successful. Um, and it's, it's even established, you know, a number of um home based businesses as well, people that wanted to start that home based business, but just needed a way to figure out how to navigate all those other components. Um, and that has definitely been a, a very successful investment um in having, in having that program. So I, I did wanna, you know, also mention that Small Business Academy, that is, um, you know, done very well.
It's definitely taken, uh, taken shape and got noticed, a lot of other towns are implementing it. But again, our little town of innovation, you know, set it out first. So, a lot of, a lot of other towns are copying that whole format and that blueprint of that, so.
We also have the access to some funding as well that we helped them get started with, which is always, that's been nice to do too. How many, we do what, four or five now?
Um, uh, well, we vetted five, but with three applicants.
I just got a couple of questions, um, what sites do you feel are going to be the next ones that will get, possibly get developed? As far as brownfields, um, I know we've got.
Which everyone has traction, I'm just putting it in high gear, um, all of them. Um, eh, from the day I got here, I s- you know, everyone's like, why are you working on Blueville? I'm like, because we have a standing building and time is not your friend on these things. Um, it wasn't our biggest site, but it had, uh, it, we had the ability to have the most traction on that one, at the easiest pathway. Um, so not to say I ignore the other ones, um, but, um, like I said, EPA is actively engaged. We have conversations, we have um follow-ups, um, so whichever one bubbles up, um, to, we're go- we're going for it.
But who's, who, who's responsible to engage the owners? Would EPA reach out on their own or is it more from your office or how, uh, how does that?
So EPA has a, uh, bigger staff and capacity um to engage and they have more enforcement tools than say the town does. Um, so, um, we're in good communication with them, we work with the Yukon Program, which is um a hub. Um, they work um in collaboration, um, so we have, mm, they're actively engaged, um.
Yes, but it's trying to, trying to convince the, owners, I, I, that's where, how do we, maybe they didn't have a, for some reason, that they're not satisfied, the town did not do them, they felt whatever, not in the right direction. So, does the EPA, do they have their group, uh, also coming from another direction? To supplement what we're doing here?
We try and be aggressively helpful. And, and getting them to understand that this is the pathway, um, that we're here to help and, and share this lift, these are heavy lifts.
Oh, all right, that's, that's, that's it, that's. Cause some of the comments is, um, the town, I don't wanna deal with them anymore. That's what I'm looking, do we, do we get it from another entity? So it's not a bad deal, you know, it's, it's, this is the way to go and, you know, as you say, their expectation was such, and when they got involved with your office and that expectation was blown out of the sky. And how do you recoup, recoup that to have someone wanna come back in and that?
Yeah, just keep trying.
The one last question I had, um, regarding our community center, the current one, once we're done with the renovations on Westfield and we move out of that building, um, is that something we're gonna have to have a phase one done on before we start, uh, putting that out to possible development?
Yeah, likely, we probably need to do a phase one, um, and potentially even a phase two, um, on that one, which we would, you know, look to see what um o- options or availabilities are on that one, um, before we look to dispose. Because, um, clearly to be able to engage a developer with capacity, um, and that one is on historic registry. So, uh, developer would be probably looking at activating some of the historic tax credits, which would be good because it would then kinda, it would help keep that characteristic of that area without, you know, somebody coming in and just kind of, uh, leveling the whole thing. So, um, interestingly, the community center property is actually three separate parcels, not just one. Um, so, um, we'll be walking through those components as well, but it is actually three separate parcels. Um, but, yeah, we would likely need to do, um, environmental fees, phasing on, on that property.
Thank you.
Uh, Tammy also has her hand up, just so you.
Uh, Ms. Wakefield.
So, kinda go along with what, um, Mary had brought up about the Small Business Academy. Um, what's, we, Killingley really kinda has a, started that. When a developer calls, they get a scope of what they need and we give them a date, so that they can meet with everybody that they need to meet with, whether it's the fire marshal, inland wetlands, planning and zoning. We give them everything, all, all the steps they're gonna need to get through to get their project on, on the road and moving. And, um, I have talked to a lot of people, a lot of business people that, that think that's fabulous idea. There's nothing worse than running back and forth between the town hall and the health department and going back to the town hall. And having, you know, start with one group, one commission and, oh no, you need to start over here. So giving them the game, the game plan that they need to help get their business up and running, is super, super important to get, you know, businesses moving in, in the town, so.
I will piggyback on what Tammy said is, I work with developers, agents, investors all over New England. And let me tell you, they all rave about how Killingley, from you guys, to planning and zoning, to economic development, the whole town. They said that it's, it's a pleasure to work, work with and it's, it's a lot easier than, uh, you know, other towns and states. Uh, a lot of, a lot of investors and builders that I talk to are, they said it's, it's such a process over years that they've been working on one project. They come in here and they, they have no problems.
So I'm just, uh, want for clarification on the mill that has now collapsed or whatever with the stacking. So we can stack, we just can't use the historical, uh, grants part of it?
Um, so, that's a little bit more complicated because now they ha- now it's almost resetting the clock. We have to find out what went up sm- in smoke, what's still there. Um, so it's almost like we have to start the phase two all over again.
So we might still.
Uh, no.
Set, alright, that's what I was asking for. Yep, okay.
Yeah, it got a little complicated. Yeah, not enough of that structure is remaining for that to likely qualify.
Any of those have any structure left?
Yeah, so PrIM does, PrIM has some remaining, um, the tower was remaining on PrIM, uh, which did have a structural analysis that was done. Um, I think it was, uh, probably around two thousand eleven, two thousand and twelve, um, that tower. Um, and that, a, a lot of the times you will see mills with only the tower remaining or one component remaining. And that's largely because if you can keep one of those structures up, and a lot of the times it is the tower because the way that they're built, they are more structurally sound than any other part of the building, so while, once the roofs collapse, um, largely those are like, you know, very small boxes and so they can, they can withstand a lot more and they stay standing for a lo- a lot longer. But, um, that will still qualify the property because those towers were part of that original structure. And so that's why you see a lot of the times just a, a standing tower. Um, the, uh, Bailey Hill Mill, the Acme Mill, um, that one would be questionable, because what's remaining is, uh, kind of a, a hodgepodge of additions over that sluice way. So the, one piece of it, I think, is part of the original structure. The other components of it were likely additions later on and it's a matter of the timing of when those additions were put on, as to whether or not it would be considered truly part of that historical property. Um, so the Bailey Hill property would be, uh, questionable based on what is still remaining of structure on that property.
Okay, no, I was just trying to understand the stack, so, uh, it just, the nature of the stack just changes for the ones with that fell down. But we might still have one with PrIM or whatever.
Yeah, and you know, each property, because they're so unique in their, you know, current situation that they're in, what their historical background is, um, capital stacks can look very different from property to property. So this is one model, but if you look at every mill that gets developed, they probably all look very different in their capital stacking. Um, and I would say that anyone that was still remaining probably did access, um, historic tax credits. But there's other properties that have been redeveloped, that have been more, may not have qualified under that.
And Bailey Hill, um, we applied for a targeted assessment grant, so they're gonna do a s- a structural analysis and, um, a phase two on that particular property. Um, so, but that work won't, won't start till the spring, um, so it won't probably be completed for a year.
Well, what about, now you have a rubble pile there, so they can't, we can't do anything with the rubble pile until all these assessments are done? Or can you assess the rubble pile to say it's salvageable?
So, you have the rubble pile, but then what's underneath the rubble pile, the subsurface? So you have like two contaminants, so the first grant is the rubble pile, is that clean, can that be removed? What's the remediation plan on that?
Well, okay, that's what I'm.
Yeah, so there's, there's that cycle and then underneath, was there anything underneath? Uh, petroleum, uh, dyes, what's underneath that? So it's two separate grant cycle funding opportunities.
But could somebody go in and you, you get the rubble pile certified to whatever and it's clean, say it's clean? Now, is that a saleable product that?
Well, it's still a potential, uh, we still have then the next cycle to be able to answer the question of subsurface. So you won't necessarily be able to identify what potential subsurface until that, because you can't, you don't have access to those basement areas. So, just because your rubble pile is down doesn't necessarily mean that they have access to the full extent of what's below. So the basement areas and stuff like that would also then have to be tested, you can't really do that until that rubble pile is removed.
That's what I was getting at, you could get, you, you look at the rubble pile.
So it's not necessarily saleable once you remove the rubble.
No, no, but I'm just saying the rubble itself, if it's got the stone, if it's the proper cut or whatever, that, that's a, in some cases I hear people.
So that likely may not, but due to the nature of the fire, that would not be rated as construction material. So you're not gonna be able to sell that as a standard brick. Um, it's structurally, it's been, it's been impaired because of the fire.
I got a guy.
We can't, you know, we have to.
I'm just joking.
You know, so we have to, you know, be cognizant and declare exactly what it is, it cannot be. Now, so, if somebody wants to u- use it for decoration, whatever, but, um, the, likely you don't have a saleable product of selling that brick. Um, that pro- that building, the roof was asbestos, um, there was, uh, other contaminants within it. Um, the question is gonna be whether or not that brick rises to a threshold of the con- of contaminant level, right? So, um, it's a matter of how it gets disposed of, it's likely not a saleable where you're gonna get money off of the debris that's there.
I was looking at more at this granite chunks, I'm not looking at the.
Oh, I don't think that there's granite chunks on that one at all. You're more likely to find granite chunks, I think, at the Blueville Mill. That was more of a stack stone.
That's the type of thing.
That was more stack stone.
No, that has zero value.
Right, the bricks are just gonna be gone.
Any other comments? Do you have anything further?
So much.
I, I wanna thank, uh, Tammy for coming to our meetings pretty on regular basis, she's always there. And I think that's awesome, cause she's communicating with you back, you know, we have more engagement since Tammy's been on, uh, coming, than we've had in all the years that I've been on this EDC count, you know, when I've been on the EDC. So I think that's great, cause we have, this is the best communication we've ever had. So thanks, thank you for that.
Um, one more thing, um, funding opportunity, uh, the town website. Um, that's our welcome mat to our community. Um, if there was an economic development tool wishlist, it would be a, a revision. Um, it's limited, people can't find the information, it's not clean, um, so that would be a, a great opportunity. And if you look at other municipalities, that's what we're competing against, so developers and site selectors, that's the first place they go, let me learn about Killingley. Um, and so that would be a real opportunity for advancement for the community.
Stay tuned because you'll be having, um, the information on our update for that next week. Um, and we're actually gonna be doing a community survey, um, so we'll have a survey available for people to be able to answer. What are they looking for on our website, what do they wanna see on the website, how do they wanna interact with the website, that type of stuff.
And in other towns, do they have a separate website for that?
Um, it's usually like a hyperlink, um, when you, um, look at some of them, um, they're so nice. They have like a drone video that you're welcome, it gives you a span of the community of like our parks and, you know, the quality of life. And you have an instant feel.
And that would be a really great opportunity for us to invest in something around like actual marketing footage. We don't have that for Killingley, um, so the drone footage or some type of, um, active marketing video. And it's really video that really helps demonstrate our town the best, so. And that would be an investment outside of just a revision of the website, but really being able to put in something to that marketing, um, tool, um, and really demonstrating, some of them even go as far as interviewing like, you know, uh, council members, staff members, community members, you know, all of that into that marketing video to really demonstrate what is great about Killingley. Why do you even wanna come here, um, what, what, what makes us great? And we can really highlight those, those characteristics that are really important to the community.
Thank you. Anything further? Seeing nothing further, thank you for coming this evening, um, it was a wealth of information and, um.
You're welcome to come again.
So always nice to get updates on, uh, the P O C D and projects going on and, um, just thank you, thank you for your involvement. Thank you. We will now move on in the agenda. Next item up is executive session and we have nothing, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion has been made by Mr. Grandelsky, seconded by Ms. Barclay, all those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions, this meeting is adjourned.